All right, we're going to go ahead and call the city commission meeting to order. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, well, good evening, everybody. If you're just joining us now, we did just finish our work session, so nobody missed anything if they caught the tail end of that, and then now we go to this meeting. So, starting our regular city commission meeting with roll call.
Benson.
Here.
Brunick.
Here.
Hanoff.
Here.
Johnson.
Present.
Minor.
Here.
Schramm.
Here.
Villanueva.
Present.
Weber.
Here.
Mayor Moser.
Here.
City Manager Leon.
Here.
City Attorney Denherter.
Here.
Interim Finance Officer Yardley.
Here.
All right, next under routine business is to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of September 11th, 2023. What is your pleasure?
Move to approve.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second. Any commission discussion on the minutes? Anybody in the public? All who's in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Anybody abstaining? Minutes pass. Number three under routine business, schedule of bills. What is your pleasure?
Move that we pay the bills.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second. Any commission discussion on the bills? Anybody in the public? Roll call.
Minor.
Aye.
Schramm.
Aye.
Villanueva.
Aye.
Weber.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Brunick.
Aye.
Hanoff.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Mayor Moser.
Aye, motion carries. Number four under routine business is the city managers' report, so I will turn it over to City Manager Leon.
Thank you, honorable mayor, members of the commission. Just a couple of things for you, other than what is in your SIM. We talked about a little bit in our work session, the off-sale package liquor that we are putting together a proposal for you all to consider. We're planning to bring that timeline forward to you on October 9th at your regular meeting. With that, we will also have a purchase or sale agreement. We are debating as a staff right now what to set minimum bid as, so we will probably put a number there and know that that can change, however you would like to do that. It has to be at least 300, that's the state's minimum. But if you have ideas, opinions, and you want to share those with us, maybe there'll be some consensus that we find for you to start that discussion. But the reason why we're bringing it forward to you now is if you all can come to terms with where you want to set the minimum bid and we move forward with that process, we can get a bid awarded and it can be, the license can be issued at the first of the year because there's a publication times and things like that we have to respect. So, that's why that's coming forward. So, think about that. Just to chew on, Sioux Falls recently had a sale of an off-sale package. We don't have very many examples to work with because it doesn't happen very often, but their minimum bid was set at 500 because that's their license fee, but they received a bid, I think, for 100,000. So, I realize they're a lot bigger than we are, but just to give you something to think about. I also want to talk about pancakes for a lot of reasons. Last week, the airport board and YRAA held a pancake breakfast. They had, according to our airport manager, Mike, over 400, 409 pancake eaters. So, they had a great opportunity, good exposure for Changurnee, lots of community members, and then lots of fly-ins for the pancake breakfast that they held. And then next, this last week, just yesterday, the Yankton Volunteer Fire Department and auxiliary put on pancake feed, and they had 876 pancake eaters. So, they had a big crowd as well, beautiful day. I'm also told that if you really like pancakes, you can eat pancakes four Sundays in a row by joining the VFW this weekend and the following weekend, I think it's the Knights of Columbus. So, if you didn't get enough cakes, lots of opportunities.
Pancakes sensing a cake off.
Yeah, Pancake City of the Dakotas. But also, I just wanted to mention to you all, commissioners, today I had the opportunity to travel with Dana Schmidt, our library director, as well as Dave Mingo to Vermillion, along with some folks from the Library Foundation and Library Board, to talk with the Government Research Council at USD. They are one of the entities that the Library Foundation is thinking about proposing to you to help with some feasibility study for the library and what that could mean in the future. So, kind of exciting step forward just to start talking about that and learned a lot and think that might be an entity that the city could use in other areas, too. So, I don't have more for you at this time, but if you have questions about things in your SIM, I'm happy to answer them.
Any questions for the city commissioner, city manager from the commission? I will have to share, I'm pretty sure Commissioner Villanueva still has dishpan hands, and I'm pretty sure mine still smell like syrup. So, no, all kidding aside, yeah, thanks to everybody that showed up to support the airport and the fire department on their pancake feed, and yeah, make sure you get out to the VFW in the Knights of Columbus. I don't know about you, but I love not having to cook breakfast on Saturday or Sundays. So, any questions before we move on? All right, with that, then we'll move under public appearance. We do have two scheduled tonight. The first one is a proclamation, so I will read that and then we'll have them come forward and share a few words with us. So, the first is the proclamation. Whereas, the Yankton Women's Club of South Dakota is an active member of the General Federation of Women's Clubs, GFWC, the world's largest organization of volunteer women. And whereas the GFWC is a 133-year-old international federation of women's clubs with more than 60,000 members and is dedicated to the community improvement by enhancing the lives of others through volunteer service. And whereas the GFWC inaugural national day of service, September 30th, 2023, is a day in which all GFWC comes together in service to highlight and raise awareness about food insecurities, hunger, and food safety within the United States. And whereas GFWC has partnered with food insecurity organizations throughout Yankton to provide meals, non-perishable food, and food kits for those with food insecurities, including veterans and their families, the homeless, fire victims, transient citizens, and school students. Now therefore, I, Stephanie Moser, Mayor of Yankton, do by virtue of authority vested in me proclaim Saturday, September 30th, 2023, as GFWC National Day of Service to battle food insecurity in Yankton and to recognize the contributions to our city by the volunteer members of the GFWC Women's Club. So, let's give them a hand as they come forward to accept this.
We got more members. Bring them up, let's get a picture. You guys came all the way to the city commission. Oh, you want us in front of the banner? Come to me wherever you like. Dave's going to take a picture. Sorry, I'm not used to the banner. We're all getting dressed up, city. So, everybody, well, thank you. This is awesome. I'm a speaker. I understand you're a speaker. Yep, yep, squeeze in and get something over on the other side.
All right, as we make our way around, I understand Liz, President of the organization, can you share a few things about some things you're working on and anything else you want the city commission to know?
Sure, thank you. I'm Liz Lynch, and I'm President of the General Federation of Women's Club here in Yankton. I also work at the Contact Center, which is the food pantry for Yankton County. And this year, the General Federation of Women, all the clubs with nationally and internationally, decided to pull together their efforts working to fight food insecurity. What our club organization decided to do, we had two projects. One, we put together hygiene items like toothpaste and toothbrush, soap, lotion, shampoo, that type of thing, and put them in little sacks, and we'll give 50 sacks to HSC because when people come in there, they don't have anything. We will give 50 of those sacks to the Women's of Domestic Violence Shelter, and we've already given 50 sacks to Pathways. It's just to kind of offset their expenses and that gives them something. Those are non-food items, but people can't buy those items with their food stamps, so it just kind of helps them. The other project we did is we, the women of the club, assembled birthday packages. And the birthday packages are a cake, cake pan with cake and frosting candles and 7-Up or Sprite, so they don't have to use oil and butter, they can use that to make a cake mix. And what we're doing with that seems how we take people's birth dates at the Contact Center. When they come in and it's their birthday, then we hand them out this package so that they can celebrate their birthday. Many times, families cannot afford to buy those things to celebrate a birthday, so that's another part of our project for this special day. So, thanks for doing this proclamation. This was kind of a new thing for me, never done this before. But anyway, our club really does a lot of community volunteering, and we focus in arts and culture, education in libraries, legislation, just community outreach. And we have a strong club here in Yankton. There's a couple other clubs, Brookings and White Lake, South Dakota, so there's only three. But we are strong in what we do and faithful and committed to the community and hopefully making it a better place. So, thank you very much, this is awesome.
Yes, thank you. Well, I'll give you another hand again. And thank you to everything you do, we really appreciate it. Obviously, all citizens in Yankton, very important to us, and so we appreciate the good work that you're doing. I love the birthday cake idea. Having been in education, I know there's lots of times people don't get an opportunity to celebrate their birthday, and so, something we don't always think about, so I think it's great that you all are doing that. So, keep up the good work and thank you for being a part of our community and the work that you do. All right. Okay, we do have one other scheduled public appearance in front of the commission tonight. Clint Brockmoller has asked to address the commission. And Clint, I hope I didn't murder your last name. Nailed it perfectly. Sometimes I'm phonetically challenged, all right.
That's a different family.
Well, Clint, the podium is yours.
All right. For those who don't know me, some of you probably do, my name's Clint Brockmoller. I manage unclaimed freight furniture here in Yankton for the last 12 years. My wife and me own Hetty Heart Healing Arts Center, it's a yoga studio here in town. And, you know, over the last few years, there's been a lot of concerns about the economy and how things have gone, things have been kind of crazy. Yankton is not immune to the struggles that everybody else has, and so, running a business and trying to drive traffic has always been a challenge. So, I wanted to open up discussion about changing a city ordinance that we have in effect, which is ordinance section 27-77, which would be the media prohibition, or, yeah, media prohibition, I did say it right, that is pretty restricting. And I've spent a lot of time on social media talking to people about it. Spent a lot of time in person today, in fact, I spent about four hours in different businesses, starting north side of town all the way through town. I only made it till about 11th Street before I got tired. But I had nothing but support going forward, a lot of signatures saying this is something we need to make a change on. The biggest problem we have is we're trying to promote our business, and when we do use banners, flags, promotional material, whether it be banners on trucks, things like that that grab attention, that bring people into our stores, our retail stores especially, you know, there is an ordinance that says we cannot have a flag or a banner more than two feet from our building. Have you guys ever seen where my building sits? Two feet doesn't even get me off the sidewalk, okay? It doesn't grab any attention whatsoever. And so, it's a matter of allowing a private business owner or manager to promote their business and drive traffic and keep people from leaving town to go to Sioux Falls and go to Sioux City and spend the money. I see on a regular occurrence, people from Yankton that don't know these places have these services available to them here, and they think they're going to get a better deal going out of town to Sioux Falls, to Sioux City. Me and Dave Mingo have had some conversations about this in the past, me and Brad Bees have also had conversations about this in the past. I'm pretty heated because I feel very strongly that we shouldn't cripple our local businesses. We shouldn't restrict how they can promote and bring in traffic, keep people in Yankton. And what is the most concerning to me is the reason behind the ordinance and the restrictions. It's not about safety, it's not about, you know, traffic, not seeing around corners, it's not about distractions, it's about how it looks. And I heard Charlie Gross say, you know, we talked years ago about how we don't want to look like Sioux Falls. That's fine, but if you're going to model your city, your economy, after somebody in South Dakota, Sioux Falls would probably be a pretty good one. They have a booming economy there, and they have for years. They're one of the fastest-growing cities under 500,000 in the country, if I recall. So, you know, to say we don't want to look like Sioux Falls, I get it, we like the small-town feel, but we need to take restrictions off. So, my proposal is to change the ordinance, get rid of the strict regulations on the signs, the flags, and make it very simple. Make it, instead of what it has, and I could certainly go over those if you wanted me to, but what I'm actually proposing and changing it to, very simple, one, no obscene or vulgar language or imagery, obviously, that's what we all want, and two, cannot block view of thoroughfare or intersections. That's a safety concern. And then three, cannot impair the vision of oncoming traffic, no strobe lights, no directional lighting, you know, keep it very safe. And that's what a government, city, state, federal should be in charge of, is keeping its citizens safe, not restricting them from doing things that are perfectly legal in any other circumstance. And so, my proposal is we change and get rid of some of this stuff so our local businesses have more opportunities to thrive and keep business here in town, and that's good for all of us, creates tax revenue, keeps my employees who are commission-based earning money, which they in turn spend here. So, I want to keep that going here, and so, I'd love to have a conversation about it and talk about it and see if we can make some changes.
Great, thank you for coming in front of the city commission tonight. Is there anybody on the commission that wants to move this forward to another meeting?
I do have a question for Clint.
Sure.
Question would be, so the people, the businesses you spoke with today, how many percentage-wise would you guess that were, would like to have maybe see this come to either the commission level, maybe at a work session even? I don't know if that's agreeable or not, but it sounds like if there's enough traction from business owners that feel this way, then maybe there's something we should talk about.
All these.
Okay.
Are what I had time to do in four hours.
Do you have that numbered? How many would you say are on the sheet?
That's, right now, that's at 23.
23?
And I only had one to say no.
Okay.
Said no, they would abstain from it.
Okay.
And I think it's more of, they're, they agreed with me, but they also said that they liked it the way it was.
Sure.
So.
And the reason, I have heard this before, some people grumble about the sign ordinance, but maybe it's just something on a longer discussion, like I said, a work session might be worth.
I will tell you that at least, I'd say at least 30% of these people have very strong feelings about it because they've been, they felt like they've been harassed or bothered by the fact they're trying to promote their business. One very, very particular new business here in town runs a.
Sure.
Tried to put some flags out, people there, I love them, put a sign in my parking lot, and things like the trailer with the sign that said, hey, we're a mile north, didn't have skirting on it. That's ridiculous. Put feather flags up. I don't know who it was, took them down and put them in their trash area. I just think this is petty, and if we're wasting money on somebody policing this, it's just ridiculous. You know, that's my opinion.
Sure.
To hinder a business who's trying to get through this, because I think, does anybody here own businesses? Any retail? Retail, retail's been tough. Retail's tough for everybody right now across the nation, and we're not, we're not immune to it. We're a little sheltered, which is nice, and we go through these economic hard times, we're a little lucky to be in the Midwest. And Yankton, I love Yankton, I want people to stay here, I want businesses to thrive. We've watched businesses go over the last year, a lot of them. Have you tried to get a steak in Yankton on Tuesday night? Get in one, you get in a good one, anyway. It's tough. So, let's let the businesses promote and encourage people to stay in town and let people know, hey, we're here, Matt has a mall that's going to have businesses in it. It's really hard to advertise those businesses when you can't put a sign out front, when you can't put something temporary. And, you know, I've done it for, I put up flags before I knew about the ordinance and had a lot of back and forth, I probably went things about things the wrong way sometimes, but I put them up for my events, like my Labor Day sale, my Black Friday sales, you know, the big tent pole events. I'm not saying I want this town littered, but it's also a basis of just rights in general. I mean, it's, if it's not, if it's not a safety concern, or, like I said, vulgar or something that's inappropriate, and I know that can be subjective, too, but making these rules based on a subjective opinion, that's like making laws and, I mean, any kind of law based on a subjective opinion is troubling to me. We shouldn't be doing that. So, yeah, that's, I feel pretty strongly about it.
Thank you.
Yep.
City Manager Leon, when do we expect the comprehensive plan review will begin? That'll be coming up soon, right?
Yeah, I think.
Can I ask everybody to speak louder? I can see everybody in the back of the room. Sorry, willing to hear you.
Commissioner Johnson asked when we thought the comprehensive plan update would take place, and I believe, Dave, you're working on the RFP now, so we're hoping that'll start early next year, is that correct? So, early 2024, Commissioner Johnson.
I'm just thinking, with that so close, the sign ordinance portion could be reviewed as part of that. 10 years ago in 2013, we did an extensive, there was a lot of community involvement, including business owners who helped write the current ordinance, and so, since we're going to be focusing on a rewrite of our, a review of our whole comprehensive plan wherein the sign ordinance would lie, I think it makes sense to review it in that process.
I guess the question I would have is what, the timing of that, how long would that take before we would have results that we could implement? I don't, maybe Dave can answer that question.
So, a typical comprehensive plan process is probably 12 months through the planning process and then another two or three months through the adoption. So, it'll be early '25 before we're through that process.
I guess my initial reaction to that is it's, if the retail sector is wanting this and they're feeling the inflationary pinch that everyone's feeling and exacerbated on their businesses, another year plus out, is that going to give, is that just going to cause more problems that we maybe could help prevent if we changed the wording in the ordinance earlier?
What's the pleasure of the commission? Work session that we've had about three different suggestions, so is there something that commission wants to suggest moving forward? Ross has his mic on.
I would just suggest that at least a work session, at least, would be appropriate because there's, there's so many things that are regulated in the city signage ordinance. I wouldn't want to get rash and just wholesale start repealing stuff without some real careful consideration discussion.
Is there any commissioner that feels it should be something other than a work session at this point? All right, we will put it on a future work session agenda. For those that aren't familiar with a work session, it's a discussion time, a chance for the commission to have a discussion and also potentially for the public to provide input if we don't run out of time. But yeah, I do think it'd be good to review our sign ordinance and policies as a group and then kind of have that discussion. So, we will get that put on a future work session agenda and make sure the public's aware of when that will take place. I'm not sure if we have topics, I don't know, Amy, if you have kind of an idea if that would be October, November, or we're into the next year?
Yeah, October, November, I have to go back, Mayor, and look at my notes to see if I have anything scheduled for October yet, but I'll make sure the commission and public knows as soon as I go back and check, and I'll visit with Ross and Dave, as I'm sure they'll put together a pretty extensive memo for you guys.
Mayor Moser, if we anticipate a lot of discussion or a lengthy presentation, maybe we should also maybe start a little earlier, just to make sure we have enough time for input, just a thought.
Yeah, no, we can look at doing that, too. Usually, we start at 6:00, but we could look at starting at 5:30 or something like that to give that extra time as needed.
Thank you.
Yes. So, usually, our work sessions are always the last Monday of the month, so maybe look at the October, November ones in particular. Clint, for you and anybody else you want to talk to, and then, like I said, we always publish that publicly, we talk about it in our media briefings, and so hopefully, we'll be able to get word out when we're able to schedule that, and we'll have that discussion. As I said, a work session is not a city commission meeting, and while the topic is published, there are no decisions or votes taken during a work session, but if we feel it's something that needs to move to a regular city agenda, after we have a work session, we can do that as well. Does that make sense? So, thank you for coming in tonight and for the, for getting the conversation started. So, all right, now's the time and place for anybody else in the public that wants to appear in front of the commission on something not on the agenda item, not on the agenda tonight. Seeing only movement out of the room and not to the front of the room, we will move on. I'm getting a note, oh, for me? Oh, yes, I have that marked. All right, we will move on to the consent agenda, and there's only one item under the consent agenda, and that's to establish October 9th, 2023, as the date for a public hearing on the request for the transfer of a location of a retail on-off sale malt beverage and South Dakota farm wine license for June 30th, 2023, to July 1st, 2024, from DBC. for June 30, 2023 to July 1, 2024 from DBC LLC, doing business as Bro Burger, Lauren Soakup owner at 304 West Third Street to DBC LLC DBA Bro Burger, Lauren Soakup owner to 2101 Broadway Avenue, Suite 40. What is the pleasure of the Commission on the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. And anybody abstaining? All right. Moving on to old business, number one is Consideration of Memorandum 23-178 regarding the request for a special events malt beverage on sale retailer's license for one day, October 20, 2023 from Yankton Area Arts, Rose Hauger, Executive Director located at 508 Douglas, for an event at the Meridian Venue located at 101 East Third Street. What is your pleasure?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any Commission discussion? Anybody in the public? Vocal.
Schramm.
Aye.
Villanueva.
Aye.
Weber.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Brunick.
Aye.
Hanoff.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Minor.
Aye.
Mayor Moser.
Aye. Motion carries. Number two under old business is Consideration of Memorandum 23-179 regarding the request for a special events retail on sale liquor license for one day, November 4, 2023 from Stripes Inc., doing business as Mojo's Third Street, 106 East Third Street, for an event at the Meridian Venue located at 101 East Third Street. What is your pleasure?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any Commission discussion? Anybody in the public? Vocal.
Villanueva.
Aye.
Weber.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Brunick.
Aye.
Hanoff.
No.
Johnson.
Aye.
Minor.
Aye.
Schramm.
Aye.
Mayor Moser.
Aye. Motion carries. Next under old business is Consideration of Memorandum 23-180 regarding the request for a special events retail on sale liquor license for one day, December 1, 2023 from Stripes Inc., doing business as Mojo's Third Street, 106 East Third Street, for an event at the Meridian Venue located at 101 East Third Street. What is your pleasure?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any Commission discussion? Anybody in the public? Vocal.
Weber.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Brunick.
Aye.
Hanoff.
No.
Johnson.
Aye.
Minor.
Aye.
Schramm.
Aye.
Villanueva.
Aye.
Mayor Moser.
Aye. Motion carries. Number four under old business is Consideration of Memorandum 23-181 regarding the request for a special events malt beverage on sale retailer's license and a special on sale wine retailer's license for one day, October 6, 2023, from The Center, Chris Thury, Executive Director located at 900 Whiting Drive. What is your pleasure?
So moved.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. Any Commission discussion? Anybody in the public? Vocal.
Benson.
Aye.
Brunick.
Aye.
Hanoff.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Minor.
Aye.
Schramm.
Aye.
Villanueva.
Aye.
Weber.
Aye.
Mayor Moser.
Aye. Motion carries. And last under old business is Consideration of Memorandum 23-182 regarding the request for a special events malt beverage on sale retailer's license and a special on sale wine retailer's license for one day, December 31, 2023, from The Center, Chris Thury, Executive Director located at 900 Whiting Drive. What is your pleasure?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any Commission discussion? Anybody in the public? Vocal.
Brunick.
Aye.
Hanoff.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Minor.
Aye.
Schramm.
Aye.
Villanueva.
Aye.
Weber.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Mayor Moser.
Aye. Motion carries. Moving on to new business on the agenda. I would like to make note in front of the public, while there are seven published agenda items tonight under new business, we will be removing number seven under new business. So once we get done with number six, then we'll move on with the rest of the agenda. So number seven has been pulled. Number one under new business is Consideration of Memorandum 23-183 recommending approval of the contract for group health insurance, dental insurance, vision insurance, life insurance, EAP coverage, flex spending and wellness program for city employees for the 2024 calendar year. And before I ask for the pleasure of the Commission, I'm going to have City Manager Leon and/or Brittany or walk us through what's being proposed.
Sure. I'll kick it off. And then if you have specific questions about the details of the memo, we can refer to Brittany. We have a proposal before you for our health insurance, as well as a number of our other insurance coverages and some other of our employee benefits. So just so folks understand how this works at the City of Yankton, we have an insurance committee that's made up of three folks that are represented by the AFCME Collective Bargaining Unit, three members of the employees who are covered under the FOP, Fraternal Order of Police Bargaining Unit, and then three non-represented employees, and then a non-voting chair that work through the renewal rates, renewal proposals, and any changes. So typically what happens each year, unless we have a rate guarantee for the following year, the committee goes out and gets solicits bids, and we did that. And with the good health, fortunate good health of our employees and low claims number, we actually have Avera Health Plans, who is our current provider, coming in with an overall decrease of 6.72%, which is really unheard of to have a decrease. I don't know that we've had a decrease in recent years and certainly is something that we're positive about. Avera Health Plan will cover the same things, same, same plan as our current plan and the low deductible plan, as well as the two higher deductible plans for those on HSA. We are requesting that the Commission renew a company that's called The Standard for our vision insurance plan. There is a 6.91 increase, but those numbers are quite nominal. When you look into the meat of your memo, you'll see that that's not dollars and cents wise, a whole lot of money, but it is an increase. We're asking to switch carriers from the standard for dental insurance to the, excuse me, to the standard for dental insurance as that offers a slight decrease overall. We'd like to continue with the Avera Employee Assistance Program. That's our mental health and carrier who provides us with counseling services to our employees for various reasons. We're suggesting that we continue, the city continues to pay 100% of the single dental insurance plan and 100% of the single employee health insurance plan, as well as 100% of the premium for the, for $15,000 of life insurance for each employee. However, we are positing that we switch the life insurance carrier. Something new this year, we're asking if the Commission is willing to offer a complimentary 2024 seasonal pass to the Huthers Family Aquatic Center. As you know, with Avera, we, the full-time employees covered on the plan do have a great life membership. So they are, they do have access to the Summit Activity Center through that wellness program that Avera Health Plan offers. We're asking that the Commission extend the contract with WELL 365 for another year through February 2025. That is the entity that provides us with trainings for things like, we had this year, training on high blood pressure, healthy eating habits. There's one coming up on time management. So those have been fun and educational and they're offered for us to watch at any time. So that's been a good addition. We're also asking that the Commission allocate $5,000, since we did have a saving for our employees for wellness program prizes, understanding that if they win a prize, that might, that would probably be something that may go over that gifting limit that we have in our personnel manual. But what we're trying to do is put together a wellness program with some wellness challenges. And there's some detail in the memo, but that's something new for us. But employees have said, looked for ways to engage and engage with wellness. And hopefully by participating, they can even further work towards their personal fitness and wellness goals and hopefully keep our premiums to a minimum going forward. There's a lot there and there's a lot of detail within your memo. So if you have questions, detailed questions, either Brittany or I can, can help out with that.
Thank you for walking the Commission through that. Are there any questions from the City Commission? If not, what is the pleasure?
Moved to approve.
Second. We do have a motion and a second. And now that we do have that on the table, are there any questions from the Commission as related to employee health benefits?
I was just going to say, overall, I thought this looked like a great package. And I was, the decrease in health insurance is kind of unheard of right now. So that is phenomenal. There's a lot of, we're seeing increases across the board because after COVID, people were going in for other procedures and getting other things done. And so I was really pleased to see that. But I was curious who the dental insurance provider is going to be underneath the standard, because I know usually that's through a separate provider with the standard, just like vision.
Dental, is this on, is that on? For dental carriers, they, there's not a network. So like for, for Avera, there's certain doctors that you go to that's in-network. For dental, that's not the case. So all that has to happen is the dental carriers, the dental offices just have to apply to be covered under their standard. So they, it was a similar process when we switched to principal several years ago, that some of the local dental carriers had to just contact, at that point, principal. Now it'll be standard, fill out an application, then they can go to being in the network, even though dental providers don't have, dental carriers don't have networks. So Standard is a company that is coming into the Midwest, are typically bigger on the coasts, but are starting to see some traction in the Midwest.
I have quite a bit of personal experience with The Standard and have been very pleased.
Yeah, we, we have them obviously for our vision and they've been very friendly and administratively very easy to deal with.
Any other questions for the City Manager or for Brittany? I don't have a question. I just like the investment that we're making in wellness. I think the opportunity to have indoor fitness through Great Life at the Summit and then to add in that opportunity for outdoor activities through the summer, I think, I think it's a fantastic investment.
And we said this was for full-time employees, correct?
Correct. So you know, we're not offering any discounts or anything for family members or family rates, but same with the Great Life Membership, it's just a single, one single pass for the individual employee. And this year, Commissioner Villanueva, we had 16 full-time employees who purchased season passes at the Huthers Family Aquatic Center. You know, we're going to visit with folks when we have open enrollment, we, you know, not to sign up unless they think they're going to use it because there is a cost and that comes out of, you know, the city budget and is paid to the Huthers Family Aquatic Center. So to be serious about, hey, you know, if you're not, if you don't think you're going to use it. So, but the, if all 145 full-time employees that we currently have would utilize that, it would be a cost of $9,280. Even with that though, we're, we're still seeing a savings based on the provider decrease for our health insurance.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments from the Commission? Anybody in the public?
Hanoff.
Aye.
Johnson.
I work for Avera Health, so I'm going to abstain.
Minor.
Aye.
Schramm.
Aye.
Villanueva.
Aye.
Weber.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Brunick.
Aye.
Mayor Moser.
I will abstain. My husband is a city employee, but I do believe motion passes on that. Number two is Consideration of Memorandum 23-184 recommending the tuition reimbursement policy remain unchanged and employees' names are kept confidential pursuant to SDCL 1-27-1.5. Before we open this up for a motion, I want City Manager Leon to walk through what she put in the packet.
Sure. Mayor and Commissioners, this is of course related to our tuition reimbursement program, recognizing employees who want to further themselves, their education, to further themselves at the city. So you have, I believe in your packet, the outline of what the program currently entails and have an understanding of, of the process that the employees currently take to undergo the tuition reimbursement. It was passed, I believe, in April of 2021 by the seated Commission at the time. The question this evening is about publishing the names of those folks who received the reimbursement. So we're recommending as a city staff that that not be the case, but that's completely up to five of you. Under SDCL, that type of information is protected information and not subject to public disclosure. So if we were to, if you were to vote to disclose that information publicly, what we would need to do is change the parameters of the program and get you all to take a look at the program again and have an employee release form. We also talked to the departments about that. There were some concerns expressed by staff about disclosing their names and whether or not that would deter them from, from, from participating in the program. There was talk about perhaps being in competition for a position and maybe not wanting other employees to know who received the reimbursement. So there was that concern too. We did reach out to our employee labor unions who feel the same way. You have a letter there in your packet from the AFSMI spokesperson or employee on behalf of the local, local members. And then there is, we did receive a statement from the FOP employee that, that represents our FOP members who supported, you know, keeping that information confidential. So I'm happy to answer questions that you have about the program or about the confidentiality of folks' names and those that participate.
All right. Thank you for walking us through that. Commissioners, questions for Amy or thoughts or?
I have some thoughts on this. As I said, I think at the last meeting, public bills paid for by the public should be open to the public and part of the public record. It's just basic transparency and open government. Now, in this case, we're talking about the names of city employees who are tuition reimbursement recipients and the amount they receive. That's all. I think this should be included in the list of claims paid by the city and approved by the Commission each month. City officials have referred to subdivision one of SDCL 1-27-1.5, which protects student records and personnel information from disclosure to the public. Now, it's debatable to me as to whether this city payment would count as a student record. And I'm not asking to see anybody's grades or attendance record. I'm not asking to see any school records, in my opinion. I'm seeking a city record and saying they should be properly identified and included in our list of claims. The memo we received that the City Manager just mentioned, was written by the HR Director, I believe, also quoted subdivision seven in addition to subdivision one. She quoted subdivision seven of the state law, which refers to protection of personnel information other than salaries and routine directory information. Now, the memo blended subdivision one and subdivision seven of that statute, but it did fail to include the second sentence in subdivision seven, which states, "This does not apply to public inspection or copying of any current or prior contract with any public employee that specifies the consideration to be paid to the employee." And that's what we're talking about here. It's, it's not- It's not school records, it's employee compensation, it's not private or personal records. And to me, that sentence I just read, that second sentence in subdivision seven, indicates that a tuition reimbursement agreement with a city employee is a matter of public record and open to the public inspection. I did read the letter from the union rep from Sioux Falls, and she said, "Publishing applicant's names would create a sense of intrusion and would deter employees from taking advantage of this benefit." We're talking about reimbursement payments that have averaged 60, excuse me, $6,000 to $10,000 so far. There've been five of them. And I really seriously doubt many city employees are gonna turn down a $6,000 or $10,000 reimbursement payment from the city because that amount would be listed in tiny six-point type along with hundreds of other monthly city claims. I think that's not gonna be the deterrent it's been said to be. It's a nice, it's a nice city benefit. I support the program. I just don't see any compelling reason to keep these payments secret from taxpayers who fund it. I guess I think any student who wants city taxpayers to pay for their education need to be informed that these are public funds and what they are spent on are accountable to the public. So I would move, I'm gonna make a motion, to add the following sentence to our tuition reimbursement policy. City employees receiving tuition reimbursement will be informed of the second sentence in subdivision seven of SDCL 1-27-1.5 and sign a release form of understanding that their name and amount received will be published with all the other, with other city claims in the city commission meeting minutes. Period, end of motion.
All right. We have a motion on the floor. Is there a second? I'll ask one more time. Is there a second from the commission on the motion? Seeing no second, motion is denied. Or, not denied, motion fails for lack of a second. But do we still need a motion to keep it the way it is? Or, or what do we need then?
No, I don't believe so. But you can consider an alternate motion if there's somebody that wants to do something alternatively.
Thank you for clarifying that. Is there a commissioner that wants to make a motion for an alternative to that?
As I understand, of the five employees who've received these tuition reimbursement payments so far, they've come from three departments. I guess my alternative suggestion would be to at least list in the city claims the department that is, has an employee receiving tuition reimbursement. In other words, it could be the police department, tuition reimbursement, $10,000. That's how it'd be listed in the claim. So I'll make a motion to that effect. I can restate it if you need me to, Al.
Please.
Okay. I would make a motion that, let me get my wording of my previous one here. Make a motion that city departments with employees receiving tuition reimbursement will be published with other claims in the city commission meeting minutes. Period, end of motion. So the example would be police department, tuition reimbursement, $10,000.
All right. We have a motion on the floor. Is there a second? All right. We do have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there a city commissioner discussion now that we have a motion?
This is a question for Ross. Ross, do you see any legal issues with naming the, a department since we're not identifying a person specifically with, in regards to where?
No, no legal issue with it. I mean, it's more statistical information anyway at that point.
Okay, thank you.
Any other?
I feel that as the commission, we approved the policy for the tuition assistance program, the city manager, and we approved the yearly budget for that program as part of our annual budget approval process. So to, and so in the policy for us and for the public, it clearly lays out what the requirements are to qualify for that. Then it's a question of the department head, the human resources director, and the city manager reviewing that and making sure that that employee is indeed eligible and then deciding if the budgeting, the budget is there to give them that funding. So to me, there is transparency, adding a name, even the department. I don't, where does this end? We just approved some benefits as part of our health policy. Do we need to release the names of employees who take advantage of that benefit? The Heather Family Aquatic Center passes as part of that wellness policy. Do we need to release the names of employees who take advantage of that benefit? I just don't see the purpose. We, we've approved the policy, can explain to the public how it works, adding an employee name or the department head, it just doesn't make a lot of sense to me.
Nathan, the health insurance policy and the Heather Aquatic Center addendum to that policy applies to all city employees. We're talking about a program that has so far pertained to only a very select few city employees.
But technically, aren't all city employees eligible to receive that benefit even though only a few have taken advantage of it?
Any, any full-time employee can apply.
City attorney, I'm curious about your opinion of the second sentence in subdivision seven of the statute that's been cited, in which it says, "This does not apply to public inspection or copying of any current or prior contract with public employees that specifies consideration to be paid to the employee."
And any, and any related document that specifies a consideration to be paid to the employee. So I don't believe that applies here, Brian. I, I just don't agree with your interpretation because this is specifically relating to contracts for employment and their consideration. The contract that's at issue here is essentially the application of the policy, not, there isn't a separate agreement with these employees that we're entering into when this is approved on a case-by-case basis. And it's only the public inspection of the documents that relate to the consideration, not the public disclosure in a public meeting. I don't agree with your interpretation, Brian.
Well, that entire statute refers to public inspection or copying of any current, or, let me get the statute here. It says.
Yeah, I've got it. It's, "The following records are not subject to," and then it lists a laundry list of statutes that are the open records. It's the.
The heading itself refers to, you know, the inspection of records, which is what makes it a public record.
Sure. Quite frankly, the heading isn't law. And quite frankly, I just disagree with your interpretation. So what this is doing is saying, "These records are not publicly available." So what that seems to indicate is there's a, there's something involving these records that is more prejudicial than the public's right to know. And the open question that I have is, who has the rights that are being protected? Are they in fact rights? So I go back to my, my comment that I made when this was brought up last time, which is that I think the safest play here is if you're going to introduce a policy that requires disclosure of the information of these individuals, they would just simply need to, as a condition of participating, waive their, you know, the protectiveness of that information. They would have to allow for the disclosure. And my heartburn over that is the people that are already involved in it. So the people that are actively going through the educational program, not realizing that information was previously going to be disclosed. So that's where I come down on that. And I do not believe that that second sentence says what you believe it says. Maybe the only person whose opinion would really matter would potentially be that of a judge, but, you know, as I look at it, I do not feel that exception says what you say it says, Brian.
Respectfully disagree. Thank you.
All right. Any other commission discussion?
I would just say, I do think we have to thread a needle a little bit here because we do have to provide transparency. And the question is, how are we spending those dollars? And I think that's provided. I think you can look at the program. I think you can see what an employee goes through in order to access those dollars. They go through their course of study, they have to go through department heads, HR, city manager, commission discussion, and they are identified by a number. They're not made-up employees. So I do think we are providing, if the question is, where did the dollars go? I think we can show down to the penny where the dollars go. But then I do think it's, we're looking at South Dakota codified law. I, I struggle to vote to say we shouldn't follow the law. That just gives me all kinds of heartburn. So I, I appreciate the commentary about making sure the public is aware of where every penny is going. I do think we've met that standard here.
So I had, I've been thinking about this a lot, coming into this conversation, and I was like, oh, well, based on what I'm reading here, it's probably not even gonna be much of a conversation around it. But the biggest thing is, is that we have such a, all of our city employees are kind of in the public eye. You know, whether it's their wages, it's a, it's a lot of information. And I'm at the point where we are at such a low unemployment rate, there are so many other options that are out there. Let's keep things as attractive as possible and try to do what we can to take care of our employees and keep things as private as possible when it is possible. And as long as we are putting good notes, you can see where the money is going, you can see that there's a set policy that we're practicing by, I, I think there should be some comfort in that. And that's, that's where the transparency is.
Any other commission questions? Statements? Oh, yes.
One thing I'd like to point out is, I love taxes and the IRS does have some stipulations on educational assistance programs. So an employer can only count the first $5,250 as non-taxable wages, per se. So when this originally happened, we did talk with our auditor and, you know, based on our policy and that was set forth, we determined it was not a working-class benefit and anything over that $5,250 of tuition reimbursement is gonna be subject to taxes and is reported as a payroll earning. Just, just food for thought because if you look and you wanna follow the trail, if it's over that threshold, you will not see one check for that specific larger amount over $5,250.
At least if you're saying that a portion of this is gonna be considered payroll earnings, salaries, compensation are open to the public and are published.
That's correct. And it, it is.
By not disclosing it, we're not, we're not revealing that information.
It is available on our payroll statements. I would say it's similar to, sometimes now we do our boot reimbursements through payroll. We do certain, we do our safety glasses reimbursement through payroll. So in that case, we've already followed policies that have been approved, I believe.
So the salaries that are published at the start of the year, all of our salaries are published, all 140 city employees and part-timers, that amount would be included in that published list?
No.
Well.
It's a taxable benefit.
Correct. It's a taxable fringe benefit based on the IRS. And also the glasses and boots and the tuition is not counted as a 100 personal wages. It comes out of an expenditure account.
Any other questions, comments? Yes, city attorney?
Thank you. Question for Lisa. Are, are the tuition reimbursements part of the warrants that the commission approves?
Yes.
So there already is a public record disclosing those payments?
Correct.
They're in the record, but they don't identify anything. They have an employee number. That tells nobody anything as far as which department is taking advantage of the program.
I've got just a quick thing. I was just wondering, we've talked a lot about employees, but the motion right now is on departments. And I was just wondering if there's anyone that's, that feels that, that is appropriate or inappropriate. That's why I second the motion. I just wanted to know if there was any other discussion on that. I'm trying to, I'm trying to piece that together in my mind at, at this same time because that wasn't something that I had necessarily thought of before. But it's a motion on the floor right now, so I'm just looking to see if anyone has any feelings towards that.
I don't know, I don't know that the department gives any indication as to who the individual is and if that is a, an additional piece of transparency. Like I said, I think we've already met the level of transparency, but I think it's worth discussing.
So as Commissioner Hanoff was bringing that up, I was sitting here thinking, okay, if, if that could create some peace of mind and transparency, maybe it is worth a discussion. It is a statistical game, depending, you know, thinking about the different sizes of departments and what is it really helping if we feel like there is a level of transparency that already exists? So Ben, to your question, you know, I did think it was relevant to talk about.
I guess a question that I have, the question that I'm trying to have in my head is, is it detrimental in some form to have it be listed out as departments? Is there a reason for it or is there a reason against it? I guess that would be, that's the, that's the question that I've got that I'm trying to wrestle in my head at this moment.
I guess the, what I question is, why single out this benefit versus other benefits? Why, why would we do that for this one and not other ones? So we talk about the boot benefit, you know, should we list the departments? I mean, you'll have a pretty good guess which departments those are for, but yeah, it's just, why do it for this one benefit and not others?
And that's what I'm also trying to think about, what the root of this is while we're sitting here and discussing this, which I think is great to discuss this. But what are we, do, do we feel that we're department-heavy with people using this program? Or I'm just trying to understand kind of, kind of why we're, why we're here? If, and that's if we're, it sounds like we are following the, the protocol that's set forth and being transparent. I just wanted to try and understand what the root of the problem is.
I think it's interesting to know which departments are taking advantage of it, but mainly I'm looking for a better identification among the claims than just employee number 3761. I'm looking for some way to track, you know, which departments are taking advantage of it. And as I said, I think it's a good program. I just believe in publishing the information.
Anybody else have comments? Is there anybody in the public that wants to address the commission? All right. Al, read back the motion.
Brian, please. I will get this down in writing tomorrow, but.
I wanna kind of meet up with the flies, I have to remember what the brother agreed to. City departments with employees receiving tuition reimbursement will be listed with the amount received among the other claims in the city commission meeting minutes.
Did you get it? Or you have it? For understanding?
I have it.
Okay. So, huh?
Say it again.
City departments with employees receiving tuition reimbursement and the amount received will be published in the city commission meeting minutes.
Okay. Any questions on that so everybody's understanding the motion in front of you? So the motion in front of you is to list the department of the employee receiving the benefits in the memo. All right. Rule call.
Johnson?
No.
Minor? Schramm?
No.
Villanueva?
No.
Weber?
No.
Benson?
No.
Brunick?
Aye.
Hanoff?
Aye.
Mayor Moser?
No. So motion fails for lack of the vote. All right. Moving on to number three then, is Consideration Memorandum 23-186, recommending the adoption of Resolution 23-46, authorizing the establishment of a base salary adjustment at 4% and a one-step plan for all non-union eligible employees of the city of Yankton, South Dakota, effective January 1, 2024. Before I ask for the pleasure of the commission, I'm going to ask the manager Leon to walk us through the proposal.
Sure. So you'll remember that you have approved wages for the AFCME bargaining unit at 4% cost of living adjustment, as well as a step in our pay plan for eligible employees who are not at the top of their pay range in our, in our pay plan. So this is for folks that are not represented by an employee union, so this would be the non-eligible employees. As you know, we are still bargaining with the FOPs, not including FOP.
Thank you for that. Any questions from the commission? If not, what is the pleasure?
Move to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second, and now that we do, is there any commission discussion? Anybody in the public? Rule call.
Minor?
Aye.
Schramm?
Aye.
Villanueva?
Aye.
Weber?
Aye.
Benson?
Aye.
Brunick?
Aye.
Hanoff?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Moser?
I will abstain. My husband is a city employee. But with that, the motion passes. Number four under new business is Consideration Memorandum 23-177, recommending the adoption of Resolution 23-55, authorizing the destruction, trade, donation, or sale of surplus property by sealed bid. What is your pleasure?
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any commission discussion? Anybody in the public? Rule call.
Schramm?
Aye.
Villanueva?
Aye.
Weber?
Aye.
Benson?
Aye.
Brunick?
Aye.
Hanoff?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Minor?
Aye.
Mayor Moser?
Aye. Motion carries. Number five under new business is Consideration Memorandum 23-187, recommending the approval of change order number one and acceptance of the completed construction project along 15th Street and the authorization of the finance officer to issue a manual check to D&amp;G Concrete Construction, Inc., in the amount of $6,010. In your commission packet, you will notice we have yet another decrease tonight in a project. So this is a change order to decrease the project by a cost of $12,805.90, and that is due to not having to work on the sub-base. So that's what that change order is explaining. What's the pleasure of the commission?
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any commission discussion? Anybody in the public? Rule call.
Villanueva?
Aye.
Weber?
Aye.
Benson?
Aye.
Brunick?
Aye.
Hanoff?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Minor?
Aye.
Schramm?
Aye.
Mayor Moser?
Aye.
Motion carries. And number six under new business is Consideration Memorandum 23-188, recommending the adoption of Resolution 23-57 and the acceptance and dedication of Gale Drive Project Utility Easements. This is just, again, a way of the city working with property owners to continue the work on this project, an unneeded step to do that. What is the pleasure of the commission?
So moved.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second. Any commission discussion on this? Anybody in the public? Rule call.
Weber?
Aye.
Benson?
Aye.
Brunick?
Aye.
Hanoff?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Minor?
Aye.
Schramm?
Aye.
Villanueva?
Aye.
Mayor Moser?
Aye. Motion carries. As stated earlier, when we started the new business, section number seven has been polled. There is no other business in front of the city commission tonight. So with that, I would ask for a motion to adjourn into executive session to discuss litigation and personnel matters under SDCL 1-25-2.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, in favor of adjourning into executive session, say aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. Anybody abstaining? We're adjourned into executive session.